I have, Francisco, are you joining in through a different email address? Because I see you on the attendee list when you should have been a panelist already. If you're all good to go on the interpretation services, then we can disregard that. Francisco, can you hear me? Okay, okay. Well. Okay, Chair Ponce, I believe we're ready to begin the meeting.
All right, here we go. Good evening and welcome. Thank you for attending the first Simulina Planet Commission of the year 2022. I have a couple of paragraphs to read before we can get rolling, so if you all. I beg your pardon. This meeting will be conducted pursuant to the provisions of Government Code Section 54953, as amended by AB 361, which authorizes teleconference meetings under the Brown Act during certain proclaimed states of emergency. The Governor of California proclaimed a state of emergency related to COVID-19 on March 4, 2020. This teleconference meeting is necessary so that the city can conduct essential business and is permitted under Government Code Section 54953 in order to protect public health and safety of attendees. Consistent with Government Code Section 54953, this planning commission meeting will be held via teleconference only and will not be physically open to the public. Commission members and staff will teleconference into the meeting by an audio or video. This meeting will be conducted via Zoom webinar. The planning commission meeting will be live streamed on Comchance Channel 28 and on the city's website, barring technical difficulties. Those members of the public wishing to participate must do so remotely via Zoom electronic meetings in the following ways. By either logging into the Zoom link located on the meeting agenda, please download the app to your computer or mobile device and enter the meeting ID, or by calling a listed number and enter the meeting ID. Public comment for planning commission meetings will be accepted via email to publiccomment@cityofstlina.org. All public comments must be emailed by 4:00 PM prior to the meeting. Email public comments will not be read out loud at the meeting, but will be publicly available and attached to the online planning commission agenda. Secretary Gamaro, do you have additional information?
I do, Chair Ponce. Let me pull up the screen. One second. Okay, for members of the public who wish to participate in public comments, you can do so by dialing 669-900-6833. At the prompt, you can enter the meeting ID 88391869734. You can press pound. And during public comment, press pound or star nine to speak. Additionally, tonight's meeting will have a live Spanish interpretation. To access the interpretation, you'll need to use the Zoom application from either your cellphone, tablet, or computer. Instructions on how to use the Zoom app, excuse me, are listed in English and Spanish on the agenda posted on the city's website. Once you join the meeting from the Zoom application, you will see a small globe at the bottom or top of the screen. Click on the globe and you will be able to access the live interpretation. We have Julie and Francisco, who will be our interpreters for this evening. That will be all Chair Ponce.
Thank you, Commission Secretary Gamaro. Commissioner Segura. Would you mind leading us on the pledge of allegiance tonight?
Loudly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, and that is with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Call the meeting to order, and Secretary Gamaro, if you'd call the roll, please.
Yes, thank you, Chair Ponce. Do we have Commissioner Anderson?
Here.
Commissioner Segura?
Here.
Commissioner Rothfeld? Commissioner Rothfeld?
Here.
Okay. Vice Chair Hale?
Here.
I'm sorry, my audio is getting distorted. I'm not sure if you guys can hear okay?
Yes, at least I can.
Vice Chair Hale?
Here.
And Chair Ponce?
Here. Thank you. That takes us to item three, which is public forum. This is an opportunity for the public to address the commission on items that are not on the agenda. Because of restrictions imposed by the Brown Act, the commission may not engage in discussion or take action on items not described in the agenda. Please observe the time limit of four minutes. Ms. Gamaro, is there anyone who wishes to speak to an item not on the agenda tonight?
Oh, we do not have any hands raised, Chair Ponce.
Right, we'll go to item four, which is consent items. Members of the commission, the public may ask that any items be considered individually for purposes of considering alternative action for extended discussion or for public comment. Unless that is done, one motion may be used to adopt all recommended actions. They only have one action tonight. That's the minutes of December 9, 2021. Does any member of the commission wish to pull the item for further discussion? Seeing none. Secretary Gamaro, is there anyone in the public who wishes the item pulled for further discussion?
No hands are raised, Chair Ponce.
Then a motion is in order, if someone would care to make one.
I move that we approve the minutes as written for 12:09, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Gamaro, will you please tally the votes?
Vice Chair Hale?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Segura?
Yes.
Commissioner Rothfeld? And Chair Ponce?
Yes. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Gamaro. Hmm.
Well, can you, can you hear me? Were you able to hear me?
Yes, we can. But your video seems to be freezing.
My internet keeps freezing and also the audio is very distorted. I'm not sure why. I'm actually in the office. Would you like me to take roll call again? I apologize.
Did you not hear everybody respond?
I did not.
Okay, pick it up from where you lost the audio, please.
But if everybody. Okay, I believe it was Commissioner Rothfeld? And Chair Ponce?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not getting, I'm not hearing Commissioner Rothfeld's responses. Is that everyone else doing that too?
Yeah, sorry, I don't know. I'm called in.
Okay, I heard that.
I heard that as well. I did not hear her response for the minutes. I just figured she said yes.
I heard her say yes, just, just before Xenia went offline, but Commissioner Rothfeld, they're a little spotty.
Sorry, I don't, I don't know why.
This is gonna be fun. Brought you through the good auspices of video conferencing. That takes us to item 5.1. Request by Gary Cohen on behalf of Antonio and Rita Castellucci for adoption of a resolution approving a demolition permit and design review in order to demolish an existing single-family residence to accommodate the construction of a new single-family home on the property located at 1547 Allen Avenue in the medium-density residential district. Director DeRosa, staff report, please.
Yes, we have this item presented by the case planner, Erin Heacock.
Senior Planner Heacock. Okay, let me share my screen. Host disabled participant screen sharing. Can you turn on my screen sharing, Xenia?
Um, give me one second. Cindy created the Zoom link, so let me see if I can.
Okay.
One second.
I'll, I'll just get going in the, in the sake of expediency and everybody's time. So the applicant is seeking demolition permit and design review approval to demolish an existing approximately 800 square foot, two-bedroom, one-bathroom, single-family home in order to construct a new 3,004 square foot with 1,487 square feet on the first floor and 1,271 square feet on the second floor, three-bedroom, three-and-a-half bathroom, two-story, single-family residence with a 244 square foot attached one-car garage. The first floor would consist of a great room, dining room, kitchen, entry area, bathroom, an office guest area, and the one-car garage. The second floor would have two secondary bedrooms, as well as a master bedroom suite with a deck facing the rear yard. Exterior materials would consist of a sloping standing seam metal roof, vertical board and batt and wood siding with some horizontal siding accents and stone cladding. The color scheme is white siding with a charcoal gray roof and gray stone. The height of the proposed home at a tie's point would be 24 feet 9 inches, which is approximately nine feet taller than the existing 16-foot-high home. Any screen sharing yet? Maybe? Let's see. Nope. Okay. As described in the historical evaluation prepared by Brunzel Historical dated April 27, 2021, the existing home is an unremarkable example of an early 20th century house and is not associated with events or persons who've had a significant contribution to the city's history. The existing home is not architecturally or historically significant, and its demolition will not have a negative impact on existing historic districts or structures. A water use analysis prepared by Chotteri and Associates, Inc., dated April 20, 2021, concluded that the proposed project would result in a reduction of water use on site. The proposed home would use less water due to the required use of modern water-efficient fixtures and appliances. The water neutrality requirement has been demonstrated to the satisfaction of the Public Works Director. As detailed in the plan set, the project includes a one-car garage and driveway, which can easily accommodate the required two off-street parking spaces. Therefore, the project as proposed meets minimum onsite parking requirements. Staff has not identified any outstanding issues related to this application that require additional discussion at this time, and we have not received any correspondence from the public or neighbors regarding this application. The proposed home meets or exceeds all required development standards and would provide a new, modernized housing opportunity within the city. Additionally, the home was designed to be compatible and respectful to the site and the surrounding environment. Staff believes that the proposed project is consistent with the required design review criteria and recommends that the planning commission, one, determine that the project is exempt from the requirements of CEQA pursuant to CEQA Guideline Section 15301, 15303, and 15332, and accept the required findings and approve a resolution granting demolition permit and design review approval for the proposed demolition and new construction on the property located at 1547 Allen Avenue. I am happy to answer any questions you may have, and the applicant and their representatives are here and able to answer any questions you may have of them as well. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see. Are there any questions of staff at the moment? Seeing none. I would invite the applicant or the applicant's representative to address the commission if they care to do so.
Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Gary Cohen. I'm the architect for the project. This home is designed to be compatible with the existing neighborhood in terms of its mass, its scale and sighting on site. The house is sighted in a similar fashion to the existing house, which it replaces with the majority of the mass being towards the front of the street and leaving a large, open rear yard. The house is designed to be oriented to the interior of the property with an open floor plan at the first floor, consisting of a great room, office, entry, and a one-car garage. The plan opens to the generous rear yard with a covered outdoor area, and there is also pool and extensive landscaping in the rear yard. The second floor has three bedrooms, baths, laundry area. It also is oriented towards the rear yard and has a large deck facing the rear. The design of the exterior incorporates a contemporary rural style utilizing vertical board and bat siding, a stone base and a stone chimney. The roof is standing seam metal. It is a highly articulated house with numerous offset planes and a varying roof line. The second floor is setback from the first floor throughout the design. I believe that this design meets all of the city's design criteria and would be a complement to the existing neighborhood. I would be happy to answer any questions that you have and would appreciate your support on this project. If you have any questions concerning the landscaping, our landscape architect, Billy Rhine, is also here.
Is there any member of the commission that has any questions at this time of the applicant's architect? I don't see any hands in the air. All right, I would like to, at this point, open the part of the hearing where the public may testify for or against the project. Ms. Gamaro, is there anyone out there who wishes to speak on this project?
I do not see any hands raised at the moment, Chair Ponce.
All right. In which case, we'll come back to that perhaps in a few minutes. Well, I'll bring it back to the commission for the present time and ask if any of the commissioners want to start the ball rolling on discussion on this project. Any hands, any hands? No. Well, if no one else wishes to speak, I've got a couple of things to say. One, I think this project fits in with the area. I certainly appreciated the photographs of the nearby houses that made that determination a lot easier and made it possible for anyone to check on that. My only real concern, and this isn't so much with the design of the house, it's with an approach, is the gas-fired fire pit. I know that's completely legal. I know the fire department isn't too troubled by them. On the other hand, this is kind of low-hanging fruit in terms of methane pollution and CO loading. I would certainly appreciate some movement at some point to get these things closed off. But at this point, we have no authority to do so. But I think they're one of those things that toils not, and neither does it spin. I would think that would be low-hanging fruit to consider when the city writes its air quality plan. I think they have to write a, I think we have to write a carbon plan by 2024. Is that correct? Director DeRosa?
Yes, I believe that is what the general plan EIR identified is, and we are actually having internal discussions about funding for that.
Yes, so I would, I would certainly hope in our, our plan, that kind of thing gets cut off. That's my only real comment on this project. Otherwise, I think it looks fine, fits in with the area, and, you know, would be a good addition. Anybody else have anything else to say on this project? I don't see any hands in the air. Ah, Commissioner Anderson?
I was just going to say that I thought that it was a really reasonable project and that it fit well into the neighborhood, like you said. And I think it's very. It's a, it's just a very nice design.
Free plug for our architect. All right, any more comments from the commissioners? I will ask Ms. Gamaro once more if there's anyone out there in electronical land who wishes to speak on the project. If so, I will reopen the public testimony part of the hearing.
There are no hands raised.
All right, I don't have to do that, so at this point, unless any of the other commissioners have something to say, a motion on this project would be appropriate. Does someone care to make a motion?
Commissioner Hale? Move that we, I would move that we accept the staff recommendations and determine the project is exempt from the requirements of CEQA pursuant to Section 15303 and accept the findings and approve a resolution granting demolition permit and design review approval for the proposed construction on the property located.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Commissioner Anderson?
One second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Secretary Gamaro, if you'd tally the votes, please.
Vice Chair Hale?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Rothfeld? Yes. Commissioner Segura?
Yes.
And Chair Ponce?
Yes. Thank you very much. That takes us to item 5.2. Request by Megan Collins on behalf of ENJ Gala Winery for adoption of a resolution approving a use permit amendment in order to expand wine tasting uses into the entirety of the existing building located at 1321 and 1325 Main Street in the central business zoning district. I will open the public hearing, and this one, Director DeRosa, is being done by Chantel.
Actually, Chair Ponce, this is also Senior Planner Heacock.
Also, Erin. Sorry about that, Erin. Stealing your thunder, as it were.
That's, that's absolutely fine. All right, we're gonna, we're gonna try this screen share one more time. Hopefully, you are all seeing an aerial of 1321 and 1325 Main Street. The arrow is actually pointing toward Money Way. So Main Street is to the upper right there. Here you can see the, the building and the parking spaces toward the rear. So the existing approximately 3,254 square-foot building is located on a 5,556 square-foot parcel in the heart of the city's central business district. The building is currently divided into two tenant spaces and approximately 2,603 square-foot, two-story space formerly occupied by the St. Helena Wine Center, which is 1321 Main Street there on the left, and then an approximately 651 square-foot space occupied by Orange Swift, which is 1325 Main Street, which is just right of the three arches you see on the screen there. The applicant is seeking use permit amendment approval in order to expand the existing Orange Swift tasting room into the vacant space formerly occupied by the St. Helena Wine Center. The main entrance for the expanded tasting room would be at 1321 Main Street. Access to 1325 Main Street would primarily be through the outdoor patio behind the building, but the existing door on Main Street here would be, continue to be used for emergency egress. The second floor of 1321 Main Street would continue to be used for staff and storage uses as the St. Helena Wine Center used it before. There is no second floor above the Orange Swift tasting room at 1325. Proposal includes removal of an existing 333 square-foot, excuse me, storage shed, so that the outdoor patio behind the building can be used for outdoor seating. The expanded tasting room would include the selling of wine, as well as branded artwork and merchandise. Over 90% of the business activities would be related to wine tasting, wine sales, and associated storage and staff areas. Accessory to the primary wine tasting use, the retail sales of branded artwork and merchandise is anticipated to be in the 5% to 10% of the business range. Proposed hours of operation are the same as that were previously approved in use permit at 2011-55, and tastings would be limited to the hours of 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM and to 9:00 PM for limited special events. The applicant anticipates a total of six events per year. Three or four events would be for wine club members only, and two or three events would be open to members of the public. Conditions of approval have been added to their resolutions, eliminate events to those. Event attendance would require reservation in advance and would not exceed capacity as allowed by the fire code. Total first-floor and outdoor area capacity, according to the fire department, is 153 people. That's capacity with the chairs and the tables, as it's configured, as shown on the screen now. No exterior modifications are being proposed to the existing building, and the uses proposed will not negatively impact the structure status within the historic downtown commercial district, nor will they detract from being compatible with the historic nature of the surrounding area. We did receive one comment letter today from the St. Helena Chamber of Commerce, which was obviously after agenda publication, expressing support for this project. Hopefully, you guys received that and were able to review it. So the, the proposed project would support both the local and visitor-serving component to the city's economy by providing jobs, tax revenue, and additional amenities. Staff believes that the project meets and/or complies with the required findings to approve a use permit amendment and recommends that the planning commission, one, determine that the project is exempt from the requirements of CEQA pursuant to CEQA Guideline Section 15301, and, two, accept the required findings and approve a resolution granting use permit amendment approval for wine tasting, wine sales, accessory art and merchandise sales, and limited special events up to six per year to expand into the building located at 1321 slash 1325 Main Street. I am happy to answer any questions you may have. Applicant's representatives are here as well, I see. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Senior Planner Heacock. Does anyone have a question or questions of staff at the present time? No, seeing none, then I would invite the applicant or the applicant's representative to address the commission if they care to do so.
Good evening, commissioners and Chairman Ponce. My name is Jeffrey Redding. I have the pleasure this evening of representing ENJ Gallo to repurpose the former St. Helena Wine Center, which represents an expansion of the existing Orange Swift winery tasting room. So we're not proposing a new use, but just to expand an existing one. We've worked extremely closely with Senior Planner Heacock and your staff to bring you a project which meets all of your city requirements consistent with your general plan and zoning. We think it will provide an enhanced. Uh, we think will provide an enhancement and fill in one of the, uh, remaining empty storefronts uh, on Main Street, which would certainly both and be both an economic, uh, as well as a, um, social benefit. Uh, we feel both to, um, locals and the, um, uh, the visiting public. As you know, Dave Finney was the, um, originator of Orin Swift. He's a, a local, um, gentleman. I believe still lives in Saint Helena and this is an opportunity for him, uh, to showcase his, uh, his product as well as provide additional, um, opportunities for, um, the visiting public as well. Senior Planner Heacock stole my thunder. I was gonna, uh, tell you that, uh, we're using about twenty-five hundred square feet of the existing first floor for wine tasting. Uh, we do have a second floor, but it's devoted simply to, um, offices, uh, and dry goods storage. As was shown on the, the site plan and, and floor plan, there'll be thirty inside seats. Um, and then seasonally sixteen additional seats on the outdoor patio, again, a use that's comparable to what existed in portions of the building already. We are going to conduct some special events, um, basically for our wine club, uh, by reservation only. Six per year, um, is, uh, what our business plan calls for. As Senior Planner, uh, Hecock mentioned, uh, we're not making any changes to the exterior. We represent and understand it's an historic district and certainly we're not gonna, um, impact that with any changes. Uh, the staff report and Erin did provide additional detail, but I'd like to leave you with our, uh, request that you, um, accept the staff recommendation. Uh, you allow us to, um, better showcase Orin Swift wines and approve our project subject to the conditions of approval, which we gratefully accept. And I have Megan Collins here, who, uh, is the more technical, um, aspect of the couple. And should you have any questions that I can't answer, I know that she would be more than willing and happy to do so. With that, I would close our staff report and, and thank you for your attention this evening.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions of the applicant? Okay, well, I've, I've got, oh, uh, Commissioner Segura, please.
I was just wondering about, about parking and how that's gonna work out. I know that's an issue in the city, but, um, again, I'm just wondering if, if the company has made any provisions for providing parking for those extra people that are gonna come in.
Senior Planner Hecock, do you wanna answer that or shall I let the commission know that we're not, uh, the four parking spaces that exist already will be retained? Um, and, um, this is a pedestrian oriented, um, activity. And, uh, there's really no more room for parking, but we're not removing any with our project, Commissioner Segura.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking.
If I can add a little more to that, they are in the downtown central business parking zone. Which basically means, uh, we recognize they have limited parking available. And what the building provides now meets the minimum requirements, um, in our parking zone. So, uh, downtown is a problematic parking space, as everybody knows, but because it is a historical district, the city has elected to, um, allow the limitation of available parking downtown. That's simply how it works. I've got a, a couple of questions. Mr. Redding, I understand that location is gonna have sixty-six seats available, is that correct?
There, there are forty-six seats, I think thirty on the indoor and sixteen seasonally on the outdoor.
Okay.
There's also seats in the thirteen twenty-five portion of the building. So that's how you get to the total of sixty-six.
Thank you. The addition, we're adding additional seats.
I'm looking at the analysis that seems to indicate you're gonna have forty-seven to ninety-nine testings a day, but with sixty-six seats, um, and you're open like nine hours a day or so. Sixty-six seats seems to be quite a bit for, uh, a total occupancy of ninety-nine over a day. I don't, I, I'm trying to figure out how that pencils out exactly.
Are you, um, well, and as you know, Chairman Pont, with use permits, what you do is, is develop a business model and you would like, we like to advise the city as to the maximum, um, activity that we intend. We'd, we don't want to be in violation of any, uh, capacity issues that we relate to you. So this is our, this is for our long-term growth, and so that's what we've tried to project.
Okay, so that ninety-nine, um, that you're looking at is, is initial number? Not, not where you want to go?
If, if I can, um, speak to the technical details of this. So our financial, we expect this to be a luxury experience. Um, so we're not expecting high turns, we're not expecting, you know, a tasting to be a forty-five minute tasting and out and to do six of those a day. We're talking about, um, our financials are based on two and a half turns for most of the experiences and not being a hundred percent full even on those turns at being forty percent full. Now, we expect some days will be higher than ninety-nine and some will be lower than ninety-nine, obviously, but on average over the year, um, we expect it to be ninety-nine testings a day.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just looking at the plan where you've got a lot more seats than you're expecting, uh, people at, uh, at a turn every hour, even at every two, and, uh, wondering why, okay?
It's a, it's a big space and so, you know, you kinda need furniture in it to make it feel, um, cozy and to make it feel appropriate.
Including two seats out in the front at the front door, correct?
Yeah, there are four seats total.
Four seats, yeah. All right. It just seems, uh, from planning point of view, uh, a lot of seats that can, my concern, and I don't wanna get here, is that we don't wanna find ourselves in the trap we were with a few years ago in restaurant seats, when we limited restaurant seats, because everybody thought we had too many restaurant seats. I don't want this to lend itself to that kind of argument for tasting room seats. So I want you guys to have the opportunity to present crystal clear that this is a high-end experience. You're not expecting to fill up, you're not expecting to turn these sixty-six seats every hour, every forty-five minutes over the course of a nine-hour day. Okay, so we'll, we'll, we'll take that as truth spoken from the, excuse me, horse's mouth and, uh, go from there.
All right, well, I think Chairman Pont, um, I've been involved in the wine industry relatively recently and, whereas it used to be you would bring people in and out very quickly, right? Now, when we're selling wines that are relatively high price, we wanna spend as much time, um, and we don't want people to rush. That, that's against what we're trying to do. I think you'll find that to be similar to many winery projects, um, in the valley. They want to entertain people for a longer period of time, not a shorter period of time.
Yes, so we're bringing people in, which is good. I'm not so sure our tax base will benefit much because many people in that, uh, expense bracket tend to have things delivered. So the tax site is will unlikely be in town. But nonetheless, we hope the spinoffs will be beneficial to the downtown. Does anyone else have any questions of the applicant? I don't see any hands. So this is the point at which, uh, members of the public who wish to speak either for or against the project have the opportunity to do so. Uh, Secretary Gamaro, is there anyone out there who wishes to speak on the project?
I'm gonna give it a couple seconds here to see if anybody raises their hand. And there is no public comment at the moment, Chair Pont.
Okay, I will, uh, then, uh, bring it, close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Is there anyone who wishes to, uh, start the ball rolling on discussion of this project, if you would, please? Commissioner Segura.
Just wanna make a comment, um, it'll be really nice to see tho- those two buildings open again. And see people coming in and out and not shut doors. I'm hoping that you're gonna, uh, on top of the high-end wines, you're gonna, uh, uh, well, I read that you're gonna be offering some items for sale like artwork and, and whatever tasting rooms offer. Maybe we'll make a little bit of money on that tax base, not a lot, but, but, um, you know. Congratulations, it's, it's gonna be nice to see those doors open again.
Any other commissioners have anything to say on this project? I don't see any hands. Now, I, I'll, I'll say a few things. I am a little concerned about the size. I don't wanna get stuck in the trap where all of a sudden people are unhappy with how many tasting room seats there are in town and how many tasting rooms there are. I'll also tend to note that, uh, tasting rooms do not tend to contribute much to the tax rolls. As people tend to things have delivered. Nonetheless, this is an empty location. We should probably try and fill empty locations up. So on balance, I am in favor of the project, but it's something we're gonna have to watch in the future. And on a personal note, hi Jeff, it's been a long time.
Hi, John, it surely has, and you're looking just as young as you did when you worked at the county. Maybe even a little younger.
I'm now pretty much all white.
Well, um, uh, yes, let me, let me just say this, I got, I got, uh, no stones to throw at that glass house.
All right, um, that was my, uh, uh, three cents worth, I suppose. If anyone else has anything to say, please do so. If not, a, uh, a motion would be in order. Do we have a motion? Ah, Commissioner Anderson.
I motion that we, um, determine that the project is exempt from CEQA, uh, the requirements of CEQA. Right in front of me, thank you. Determine that the project is exempt from the requirements of CEQA pursuant to CEQA guidelines, section fifteen, three, oh, one, and accept the required findings and approve a resolution granting use permit and then approval for wine tasting, wine sales, accessory art, merchandise sales and limited special events.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second? Thank you. Uh, I think the tie goes to Commissioner Hale, or Vice Chair Hale. Ms. Camaro, will you take the vote count, please?
Commissioner Anderson? Vice Chair Hale?
Yes.
Commissioner Russell? Yes. Commissioner Segura?
Yes.
And Chair Pont.
Yes, thank you. That takes us to, uh, item five point three. A request to adopt a resolution approving a demolition permit for existing structures and design review to accommodate the construction of a single-family home and accessory structure located at fifteen oh four Stockton Street in the medium-density residential district. I will, uh, open the public hearing and, uh, ask for the staff report. And this time I'm probably correct in suggesting it's Ms. Powers' staff report, please.
That's right, and hold on just a moment here, Commissioners.
So your screen sharing works and Erin's doesn't?
Individual co-host. So that's why Erin's screen worked the second time and not the first time around.
Yeah. Uh, thanks for that, Xenia. Uh, Commissioners, the item before you tonight, uh, as, uh, Chair Pont, uh, noted is, uh, request for demolition permit for existing structures and, uh, design review for a single-family residence and accessory structure located at fifteen oh four Stockton Street, uh, within the general plan district of, uh, medium-density residential and zoning density, uh, zoning district, medium-density residential. The request is to construct the single-family dwelling and detached garage. Uh, there is an A D U also contained within the accessory structure that contains the single-car garage. But that is, uh, only, um, subject to building permit approval, as just noted here for reference. Water usage on the site, uh, after, um, upgrades to irrigation and plumbing fixtures will be approximately a hundred and fifty gallons per day less than existing water usage. Uh, as you see, here's the, the site plan. Uh, we have a total of three thousand ninety-seven square feet for, uh, the residence and accessory structure together. The main residence by itself is two thousand three hundred and ninety-seven square feet and the accessory structure, which contains a single-car, um, enclosed garage, uh, three hundred and thirty-eight square feet and three hundred and sixty-two square foot A D U. The allowable floor, floor area for, whoops, sorry, very sensitive, uh, responses here right now. The allowable floor area for this district, uh, and the parcel is two thousand nine hundred and sixty-four square feet with the exceptions of the four hundred square feet for A D U and two hundred square feet for garage space. Uh, as you can see, the floor plan here, uh, is proposing a master bedroom at the rear of the primary dwelling with, uh, master bathroom, uh, laundry room, uh, exercise room, a den or potential second bedroom and second bathroom, pantry, kitchen and dining room, and then a living room area at the front of the property. The home is proposing, uh, rustic colors and materials, but a sleek, modern design for the single-story home. It'll integrate well with the neighborhood, uh, being sort of a transitionary neighborhood from, from rural to, to urban, uh, in the medium-density residential zone. And I just wanted to note the floor plan for the accessory structure. Uh, we have the one enclosed, uh, single-car garage, uh, and, uh, A D U. It'll be just a, a room, bathroom and kitchenette. Uh, single-story as well, located at the rear of the house. And basically, this is the view that you will see from the street. And this north elevation, uh, will be visible for, uh, the property adjacent to the north side of, of that on Pine Street. I didn't include this in my, uh, my staff report, but I wanted to just briefly, give a glimpse of the surrounding homes in the neighborhood. Uh, this is sixteen sixty-five Pine Street, uh, directly across the street from the proposed, uh, project site. Across Pine and then across Stockton, um, there's the, the two, uh, homes at the intersection there of Stockton and Pine Street, uh, fourteen sixty-seven Stockton and fifteen oh five Stockton Street. It's a little difficult to tell with all the landscaping in front of fifteen oh five, but this is also a single-story home uh, as is fourteen sixty-seven. For fifteen forty Pine Street, this is the home just, uh, adjacent to the project site, um, on the north side. And then fifteen twelve Stockton Street is adjacent to the project side on the west, uh, on Stockton Street. We have, uh, two amendments proposed, uh, to the conditions of approval. Those will be, uh, conditions of approval fourteen and fifteen, which will read, uh, for condition fourteen, no new landscaping shall be installed while the city is in a declared phase two or phase three water emergency. Uh, I know that, uh, the city just recently, um, came out of the, the phase two and three water emergencies. Uh, but there is the potential that, um, by the time building permits are submitted, uh, we could be back in that situation again. So we wanted to add this condition, uh, just to make sure. And then. Condition fifteen, this was added as the the kitchenette was added to the ADU. Just in the final days after the report had been completed. Sheet A zero point three of the project plan shall be revised to reflect. The addition of the kitchenette to the ADU contained within the accessory structure upon submittal of the plans. To the city for the purpose of obtaining a building permit. Staff's recommendation tonight is that. The planning commission determined that the project is exempt from the requirements of SEQA pursuant to section. One five three zero three. And to accept the findings and approve a resolution granting demolition permit and design review approval for the. Proposed construction on the property located at fifteen zero four. Stockton Street, subject to the findings of fact contained in the resolution and conditions of approval as amended. With the following two ki- conditions of approval. Number fourteen, no new landscaping shall be installed while the city is in a declared phase two or phase three water emergency. And condition number fifteen, sheet. A zero point three of the project plans shall be revised to reflect the addition of the kitchenette to the ADU contained within the accessory structure. Upon submittal of the plans to the city for the purpose of obtaining a building permit. That concludes my presentation and I can take any questions. From the commission and we have a representative for the project online as well.
Thank you, Ms. Power. Does anyone have questions of staff on this project at the present time? I can't, ah, there, thank you. I do not see any hands. Okay. This would be the time then for the applicant or the applicant's representative to speak on the project if they care to.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Tim Chappell, I'm the architect on this project. Good to meet everybody. So the designer of this house is a retirement home for a couple, they actually met in San Francisco years ago. Selling love and their their best memories of their youth were coming up to St. Helena and. And enjoying it so much that they decided that they wanted to book in their lives by returning there as their as their permanent retirement home. And they fell in love with this property. Obviously, it's a great little downtown location. And our goal was to try to design a house that was a destination for them. And be a a nice contribution to the community, so. The design of the house is developed as a modern kind of a rural cottage, it's a compound house, as you can see, it's kind of broken down and it's massing. Into these and the simple three hip gable forms. We try to use a lot of natural materials, kind of darker natural hues for the house to recede, we really didn't want to introduce some bright white. House, which you see too much of probably, I know I do, into these areas, we wanted to kind of feel like it receded in the neighborhood. And originally, we submitted it back in August of twenty two, twenty twenty as a two story house. We went through the neighborhood, we did outreach program, we didn't have any people contesting it, but when we submitted for the design review process. In planning department, Maya was really concerned about the two story in this neighborhood and she asked us to reconsider it as a one story. So the owners went back and we did reconsider and we redesigned the house. Reducing the square footage from thirty five forty five down to its present, which is under twenty nine hundred square feet as a one story. And, you know, with that, I mean, I think the the massing of the house does obviously really follow similar to what the existing house there is right now in that very simple form. Kind of falling parallel to the side street. We do have the owners, Mark and Margarita, they're here in attendance also, we also have Chris Merritt, the landscape architect. If you guys have any questions. But in reality, we really just wanted to create a simple little neighborhood house with a with a kind of a traditional contemporary edge. Do you have any questions, I'm here to answer you.
Thank you, Mr. Chappell, does any member of the commission have a question of the architect? Or the rest of the working staff here on the project? I do not see any hands. All right. This would be the time then for any member of the public who wishes to speak on the project to do so. Ms. Camaro, is there anyone out there who is trying to or wishes to speak on this project?
Give me one second. I do not see any hands raised at the moment, Chair Pont.
All right. Oh, I do see a hand. Ms. Camaro, do I see his hand here?
Yes. Yeah, hi. Can you give me a video, I I just wanna. I just want to see everyone and I want to see us as a couple that really actually wants to. Real people, certainly just says, you know, cabin investments, but. We love the town and we we would like to be able to live there in a house that we we enjoy. So hopefully the the commission approves this. Hopefully we get to see you in person at some.
Thank you, Ms. Chavez. And as a former commissioner used to say, more shall be revealed. So we should be done here, I think, to its suite. Ms. Camaro, anyone out there in electronic cloud land? No?
No members of the public have their hands raised.
Chair Pont, yes, I actually did want to apprise the commission that before the meeting. I I did receive a phone call from the neighbor across the street at fifteen oh five Stockton. By the name of George Myers, and I instructed him to send in an email, but I don't know if it actually was received. And he's he's actually in support of the project, he had just requested. If there could be consideration of an additional olive tree added on the Stockton Street elevation. Because I guess their house is directly across the street and they thought it would add to a little bit more privacy, so I noticed it. Either they're on the call and not able to raise their hand and I see, I don't see that we've received their public comments, so I thought I should just pass that on. For the commission to consider, thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Merritt, I will. Open it up again and ask Mr. Merritt if. What his belief in that request would be.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. We show a grid of olives on the Pine Street side. And at one point, we actually had a a return, it would make an L shape for the olives. But we were running up against a visibility triangle with the planting heights of the being that were on the corner of the street. And that's really. Probably one of the driving factors of 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 the height with the planting along the street frontage. So that's why we actually didn't have olives along that face along with, you know, the facade of the architecture.
Thank you. Reasonable, we're having trouble with the site triangles all over town, so. Listening to a landscape architect saying, hey, I'm designing around the site that wants that the site triangles is a good thing. All right, I will once again close the public part of the hearing. Does anyone on the commission have anything to say about this project? Miss, Commissioner Segura, please.
Thank you, I would just like to commend the architect, Mr. Chappell. For listening to to our planning director and the suggestions that she made. And the fact that you were willing to work with her. And offer a a beautiful house, it sounded like you, the original project was was beautiful, a bit high. And that the applicants were willing to work also, you know, and in providing a beautiful single, single story home. So kudos to you, kudos to to Ms. De Rosa and thank you.
Anyone else? Oh, I I'll say a couple of things, I I too appreciate you determining that the structure should be one story. I think it fits in better with the area around it. And it's a fine looking structure. Once again, however, we've got another fire pit. And I need to go with my college whiz, we shouldn't, really shouldn't have fire pits. Because they contribute to carbon loading and we're already seeing temperature rises. Across the United States, which apparently have contributed to our. Very massive drought we're having. But that's my only concern remaining about this project. It it looks lovely, it fits in with the area. And somebody's gonna have a heck of a lot of olive oil. Unless there anything else, any commissioners wish to say on the project? I don't see any hands, I would think a motion would be in order. All right. Commissioner Anderson, please.
I motion that we determine that the project is exempt from the requirements of SEQA pursuant to section fifteen three oh three. And accept the required findings and approve a resolution granting demolition permit and designer view approval for the proposed construction of. On the property located at fifteen oh four Stockton Street. And then do I have to say the two conditions also, or?
Yes, please read those into the record.
Which page were they on?
I I I think it's good enough if you just say the two modifications to the resolution as recommended by staff. That should be sufficient.
Plus the two. Conditions recommended by staff.
Additional commissions, sure, okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I second.
Commissioner Segura, second, thank you. Secretary Camaro, if you'd tally the votes, please.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Segura?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross? Yes. Vice Chair Hale?
Yes.
And Chair Pont.
Yes, thank you. That concludes our public hearings for the evening and takes us down to. You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
And there are no scheduled matters, which takes us to department reports. Director De Rosa, do we have a departmental report tonight?
We do. I have a couple of items to update you on. We'll start with. The housing element update, I know Chair Pont, you asked just for a quick briefing. And I appreciate that Aaron stayed on the meeting because he is. Very actively managing this project, as you know, there's a community meeting on Thursday at six o'clock. But I thought it would probably make most sense to have him just provide you some briefings with the latest on the project, so. I will defer to Senior Planner Heacock.
Thank you, Director De Rosa, so yeah, one thing I know we've spoken about before is a schedule, we're we're making some fine. Tuning adjustments to that and we'll we'll definitely get you guys an updated schedule hopefully this week. As you all know, the the housing and safety elements are well underway. We did adopt a safety element in twenty nineteen as part of the general plan update, so. Essentially, that is just going to be some minor tweaks to to the existing one to comply with new state legislation, so basically, we're in the. The data collection and analyst analyzing of existing, you know, goals and policies that we that we adopted in twenty nineteen to see what we're gonna keep, what we're gonna modify. What what new things we want to add. As far as the the housing element component goes, one thing, if you haven't checked it out yet, please go to St. Helena Housing dot com. Lots of good information on there, you can sign up for email notifications where. We'll we'll send you notification if a meeting's coming up or if a new piece of information comes out, so. If you're interested, please, please go to the website and sign up for that. As far as up upcoming things go, as Maya mentioned, we do have a community workshop Thursday at six P M. That will be us presenting kind of the preliminary housing opportunity sites. And and the units those can accommodate as far as our arena is concerned and soliciting feedback from the public on those, so. This is just the time for us to to show you the sites, you know, that we preliminary identified and for you to say, hey, these sites are great, or no, we don't like this one. Have you considered this one, so so really just soliciting feedback on Thursday night, so we hope folks will show up for that. The next big thing will be a joint planning commission city council meeting in February. We're working on fine tuning a date for that, it's looking like February twenty second. At four P M before the city council meeting is the is the leading candidate at this time. We'll we'll keep everyone apprised of that as we finalize it. We expect a draft housing element to be completed. And submitted to the city for internal review in March, if you can believe that, so probably toward the end of March. So we'll get that and have to go through it. The fine tooth comb, get that back to the consultants and then they'll they'll work on crunching out. A public or public review draft that we expect to go out and probably toward the end of May. And all that will be leading up to SEQA work and then hearing after hearing after hearing come come later this year, so. We're we're on track, things are moving, you know, this is a firm deadline that the state has us. Has a has us holding, holding tight to, we'll put it that way, so we we have to get this thing adopted by the end of January twenty twenty three and. We have every intention on doing so, so that is the update on the housing element, thank you.
Thank you.
I I'd also like to add that I really commend Aaron for the notification. We actually went over beyond in a over, what is that word? Beyond and what we've normally done and we've actually included a notification in the water bill of the upcoming meeting on Thursday. So we'll be interesting to see if we get additional people participating for that, so there's some additional things we did to get the word out. This round. Okay, so now let me turn the focus to the next item, which is our zoning code update. I do have a lot to update the commission about, so just if you have any questions or anything after I kind of give you my briefing, let me know. I'm starting with the subcommittee, they have received all sections of the code with the exception of the affordable housing section. Over the holidays, the subcommittee completed the review of our a a brand new telecommunications ordinance, the city currently doesn't have one. And then we also made refinements to our planned development overlay zone. And they reviewed that and we received comments back on that. Regarding the affordable housing section, which is under review by staff, the comments are due this week back to the consultant. It includes our inclusionary housing ordinance recommendations. Those have not been validated, so that we do know that there's going to be. An additional round of comments due before that's ready to the to be released to the subcommittee and also. Before we have a joint meeting with the planning commission and the council. We do have a date for our final clap for that, John, our final subcommittee meeting is going to be February ninth. We have a variety of topics that we've identified to finish that out. Including a variety of, I guess, items that were the committee discussed and we're not able to bring closure to. The zoning map, in December, the city council approved an augment to the Lisa Wise Consulting Agreement. And so we have decided to prepare a comprehensive update to the zoning map. Because the we, it's really important that the base layer align with new zoning designations overlays. And we'll have that to go for adoption concurrently with the text of the main code. And then when we begin our public workshops as part of the draft release. That will probably take a total of six weeks for us to get through and that will be a variety. take a total of six weeks for us to get through, and that will be a variety of three different workshops on different topics. And then the public hearing, similar to the housing element, we're going to have two planning commission meetings, two council meetings, and we anticipate to get through that process two months. So of course, that would be after we do our public workshops. So the main driver of the project schedule right now is that affordable housing chapter. And once we get validation on the inclusionary housing recommendation of the 20% is what they're recommending, but we're still looking for additional data that directs us to understand how they came up with that. We have a meeting on Friday to hopefully bring that to closure. So that's my briefing on the zoning code. And the only other thing I think I wanted to update the commission about is we did get the SB9 ordinance adopted by the council on December 14th, and we plan to have a checklist and an application up on our website this month. We've actually been working, we actually started that process before the holidays. So there's a lot happening in the department, both with a lot of projects that we have under review for development review and also these more long-term, long-range planning projects. So I hope that was helpful.
It is indeed, and a lot on your plate. Thank you. Does anyone have any, any questions for Director DeRosa? I know we can't discuss, but we can ask. No, hearing none? All right, takes us to item eight, which is the agenda forecast. As always, there is a link available on the city website to look at what's up and coming. This is also the opportunity for any member of the commission to request something to be put on our future agenda. If you would like to see something on our future agenda, now is the time. Okay, no hands. All right, so we're down to the jury, and thank you.
Thank you.